City Council, City of Alpine, Texas will hold a regular meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, August the 20th, 2019 in the council chambers at 803 West Holland in the City of Alpine, Texas for the purpose of considering the attacks agenda. This notice has posted pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 155.1.4 of the Great Texas Government Code. Public notice, the use of cellular phones are prohibited in the city council chambers during meetings of the city council members. Members of the audience will be provided an opportunity to address the council during public hearings and during action items. Please speak into the microphone located in the podium. State your name and address. If you have a petition or other information pertaining to your subject, please present it to the city secretary. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule the topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff will be allowed. The mayor and/or city council members may call upon two orders, a order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack an elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be ordered. Call three to order will have the invocation of Reverend Russ Clark Nosentoff.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Father in heaven, we just thank you for the day that you've given us, and I thank you for each of the members of this council and their willingness to serve our community. I pray, Father, that they will look to you for guidance and direction in all the decisions that they need to make this evening. I pray for peace and cooperation amongst the council and the city staff as they go forward in all the decisions that need to be made and all the action that needs to be taken. I also just lift up the staff of the city. Many of them are taking on extra responsibilities because of the situation that we are in presently, and I just pray that all of this will be resolved quickly. We pray all these things in your name. We thank you that you continue to work on our behalf in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, in the name of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Judge Jackson.
Thank you. City Secretary of Health, form.
Mayor, we do have a forum. Help us sort of discuss this, Colberto and Montalion. The notice was posted at 2:00 PM on August 16th, 2019.
Thank you very much. We usually have a presentation this evening, and it's for Chief Russell Scoll, who has retired. He's not here. I believe he's out on extended vacation now, so I'm going to go ahead and read the certificate. Chief Russell Scoll, Alpine Police Department. In grateful appreciation to Russell Scoll for 23 years of service to the City of Alpine Police Department, signed this 20th day of August, 2019, addressed Ramon Smear, City of Alpine, Texas. And also, we have a plaque that we'll present to him, and I'm going to go ahead and read this. Honoring Russell Scoll on his retirement, in grateful recognition for your outstanding leadership and dedication to the staff and citizens of the City of Alpine, Texas. 23 years as police chief, 1996 to 2019. Y'all bear my hand even though he's not here. I don't have one. City manager. Correct, good city manager.
On the street updates.
Okay.
Eddie Ciaran Keyes, council has new questions for him. But the accomplishments so far for the month of August. They moved a storage container from the recycle center to the airport. They sealed the walking track at Coconut Park with an MS2 asphalt. They mowed Creek from East Holland to East Brown. They hauled 50 tons of topsoil from the recycle center to the warehouse for use in water leaks for the water department in the city parks. They moved city vehicles from the administration office to the recycle center. They primed roads with MS2 asphalt oil at the Country Club Estates. They milled and paved Hancock Street between Corporal and Phelps. They paved Creek crossings on Biding Bug Avenue. And they completed 10 work orders, and the crosswalks have been completed for the schools in the district. And in your pockets, if you'll notice, you have the little update on the gas department on your report. I can actually go over that if you'd like, but it's pretty self-explanatory. Building inspector updates. We have actually reached out to four different cities to see if an inspector would like to contract to come in two, three times a week so that we can move on with constructions. We're still waiting for those folks to come in, and we did request that they be put in a bid to actually provide their certification of their licenses as well.
Very good.
There was a notice sent out by TML in regards to our sticks, our U F D sticks. Their recommendation was that if we do use stick to make sure that we have that inspected or checked prior to us, we turn it into our computers to use them. Last thing I've got is the Lingual notices that went out to our citizens that came up because our ACH was actually suspended, which is our online banking, because everyone that was on that list for us to be able to raise a habit had left. We were actually using one that was, or imported, I think, like six, seven years ago, and the other two that were on are on the local.
So that's been fixed.
And that has been fixed.
Yeah. That was last week.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's our white card.
All right. How about city staff updates? Any?
You will see in your packet as well that there is a quarterly report that was submitted. A very brief one, just on my paper. Again, it's just a quarter for, the third quarter on the investment report.
And did we have a municipal court report also? Think we pre-scheduled that?
No, actually, it's down under.
Okay, all right. Okay, let's move on to public hearings. Public hearing to obtain citizens' views and comments concerning the tract of the Metugia project. Properties and property identification, property identification is 5.475 acre tract of land out of Section 102 in Block 9GHNSARYCO. Survey being out of 10.6 acre tract of land described in the Book 210 at page 472 and being all of 1.0 acre tract of land described in Book 324 at page 164. Both recorded among the official public records of this county, Texas. Property owner is Skyway Gardens Limited.
Were you not?
Any comments on that?
I'm Barbara Tecker, and my address is one thirty South Harrison. So I'm directly in front of, I guess, where this project is happening. And there's, we have great concerns about the construction that's being proposed. I don't know if it's been approved yet or proposed. We, first of all, did not receive any notification that this was going to happen. And we currently already have flooding issues when it rains. I sent one of the clips to Lucy, I think she sent them out, but it's basically like a small lake after it rains very hard. And a lot of that to do because of the protection wall that used to be there was taken down when the Harvey Park went down. So if you consider all of the building that's going to be happening with the cement and everything, I can only assume that the flooding will get 10 times worse as it is now. And also, our water pressure is awful already, and so if the water is going to come from our main line, I know that the water pressure is going to be even worse. Our other concern is just our road was designated as a dead end road. That was one reason we bought our house there, because we have children, and our neighbors have children, and it's just a safe place for our families and our children to play. It's nice and quiet. And so if it's being considered to open that road, I'm assuming that we're going to have trouble with people speeding and just the amount of dirt and our children's safety. Those are the concerns that we have right now.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Officer Cobles, Ward 5. In previous meetings, I have touched on that issue with this development, quote-unquote. Previous city administration, previous city manager had brought that particular development up with the Skyway development, and I have a reading here of February 2017 where he was trying to land that development on South 11th Street, and that failed. And just visiting with people around town, in particular the area, I know that several improprieties spotted on top, you know, they just flooding issues, water pressure, who's going to pay for the roads, blah, blah, blah. But one of the issues that really stuck out to me, and reading this letter right here by the previous city manager, was the city applying for support from the Texas Department of Housing Tax Credit Program. And for today's show, for the record tonight, if the city actually applied for this, and is it really still going to fall under affordable housing also, or is it going to aim towards your $1,200 a month, catering to a certain status? This, if that's the case, you know, this will fall on top legally because there's a tax credit and many, many other incentives, and aside from the other improprieties that already exist. I know this issue of annexation was fast-tracked. Some always wish it would have been poured north of town or somewhat earlier, that would have been more convenient instead of the city stretching out a little further. But think about this before you sign the dotted line, is that if it really falls under affordable housing, and I'd like to know if the city applied for the housing tax credit program, or if it's going to end up a condo living for somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I'm Dick Zimmer from Ward 5, and head of planning and zoning. And we did have a notice come down through us to agree or vote about change in some of the plants or whatever of the Skyway development. We actually, because it wasn't really a zoning concern anymore, we actually said that we're concerned, again, about flooding issues. We sent that back in a note saying, okay, flooding, who's paving the road? Where are your access coming in? Forty-nine apartment units, as probably 50 cars, or 100 cars, rather, that you're looking at driving in and out of that. We do need affordable housing, there's no question about that, and we were assured that that particular housing development would be built up in terms of a bulk of the flooding plan. And where does that leave the rest of the water to go? And we should look at that. I think, I don't know whether we have the qualified people on staff to do that, but that would be a nice response to this group of people. We did have one of the people from Harrison Street come in at our last planning and zoning meeting and ask us, and we told him, we're not the people to talk to. You need to talk to your city councilwoman. And I knew that's music, and bring that before the council. So those are our concerns.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Dave Lambert, Ward 5, and I thank Mr. Zimmer. Get on it, as well as some of the other. As the former county flood administrator, another duty assigned, one of those ones. You do know your flood maps are like 1990. Lucky. Every property that we did, miles with the county, they had to go through a bank. We had to go directly to the FEMA, have it redone again. There was a property that was out in this area. I know this company came forward to several of our nonprofit organizations who would not support it. And a lot of it has, one, they don't support any of these things. The other one is, by looking at this, you know, I feel those people that next door, as Mr. Zimmer said, if you build that up, that water got to go someplace. So it's going to probably end up, and there you are, in your neighbor's yard, and then coming back towards Lock and Cedar. And, don't screw my restaurant. Anyway, those are the things you need to really take a look at. You need to really get with FEMA and ask them to do another evaluation. It's going to cost you. Unless you got a hook over there that might come out here and do it, we're on the time lock. But that is a flood area, and I don't know what bank would own a building or flood zone, and then create another flood zone that's going to be right back here to your table again, especially for Congress, especially. I suggest you don't build, or allow them to build. Say it could be already, taxpayers already have, and what it's going to cost you otherwise.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the public hearing and obtain citizens' views and comments on ordinance, 2019-08-02, making appropriations for the support of the City of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020. Appropriating money to sinking funds to pay interest and principal on the city indebtedness, adopting the annual budget of the City of Alpine, Texas for the fiscal 20-year, 2019, 2020. Any comments? City and I, then we'll go ahead and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
So, Mr. Mayor, there was one item that we kind of, can we talk about the investment reports?
No, that's it.
And that was under the city staff updates and etc.
Yeah, nobody talked about that again.
And the other reason I'm bringing it up, it's in our packet. Just, I think it's important for everyone to recognize, we have roughly $1.3 million invested of reserves that the council has set aside before. We have an obligation to give quarterly report, that's by law. The report was included in our packet. We're getting two and a half percent interest on this, I'll read through the report, and we picked up a whopping $8,000 to add to our interest to that, but it is a sizable business.
It's better than people.
That's for sure. I just want to make sure that I got on the record, because it was on our agenda and is a requirement we have to fulfill.
Okay. So noted, then. Anything else? Okay. Then we'll go to the consent agenda. And those were the minutes, various reports, department-written reports, court appointments, et cetera. A pool of minutes for the city council meeting of August the 6th.
In your packet, you'll see the minutes from the last council meeting of August the 6th. There is an amendment that I did, that I put on your table, was just reflecting your 2018, 2019 adoption.
Just rolling another one.
Yes. And before you make a motion, I'm sorry. I would like to introduce our new human resource coordinator, Brooke Upchurch.
Oh, you brought her in, Brooke.
She hit her department buddy.
Busy later, but I come in the offices, on that screen, so you off to a good start.
Good thing there.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda with the amended minutes as was presented to us.
Okay, there's a second.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion made, and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please, right hand. Oppose, black sign, motion carries, thank you. Notice to the public, the following items are of routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and supportive material on each item, and/or it has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by council member. In which event, the items or ordered items will immediately be withdrawn for individual consideration in this formal sequence after the items are required, except if discussions have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote. I don't see a thing there.
Before we did that, I was.
Yeah, that was, it was in reverse, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so it's been read. Okay, let's move on to item seven, information or discussion items, quarterly report. Yes, sir. Dick Zimmer.
Dick Zimmer, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for having us here to give our quarterly report. I would like to, we haven't had a chance to commend members of our commission, Raul Williams from Ward 1, Tim Pierce from Ward 2, Eileen Dorp from Ward 3, Joe Torres from Ward 4, Dennis Foley from Ward 5, and additional member Tom Kennedy and myself. We are a seven-member commission, the only one that has in the city. We exist as a commission to advise the city council on planning and zoning changes, and that's all we do, is we listen and we advise and we bring it to you. Since January, we had dealt with three zoning changes, one which you, in your wisdom, reversed after the correct information was accumulated and moved on something that needed to be done quickly. We currently are trying to complete the work of our previous chairman, Carl Fleming. He was keen on getting the city map in order and keen on redefining the historic district which the council had several years ago asked us to do, and we are currently looking at that. So, and our other task as well is to advise you of any new rezoning changes. But I have here tonight a cartographer, one of our members, Dennis Foley, and he's going to talk about mapping our zoning map, and its need to be updated, and what he thinks would be the cost of it. And then Tom Kennedy will be and talk about our historic district as he has been looking at them. So, Dennis, come on up. Without somebody holding the map. Take one quarter and then flip on the other one.
My name is Dennis Foley. I live in Ward 5 and am the representative to the Planning and Zoning Commission from our ward. Y'all may have seen this map before. It was created, I think, maybe four or five years ago, and it's a color-coded approach to what is the zoning of our town. And so it's a visual aid for you, for us, as we try and understand where there's residential property that needs to be protected, where there's commercial property that needs to be encouraged and protected, where the best place might be to put low-cost housing. So it's a working map, but it's way out of date, apparently. And as near as I can tell, it's somewhere between two and five years outdated. So what we would like to do is make this a living map, a working map that gets updated by annually. We have been talking with the Real Grand Council of Governments out of El Paso, and actually, our county judge is serving as the president of that organization during this year, I believe. So that's a nice connection for Alpine with that regional group. Their purpose, as I understand it, and I have spoken with their director in El Paso, is to provide services cooperatively with smaller governmental entities like Brewster County, like the City of Alpine, that may not be able to afford their own cartographic department, mapping department. But if we combine together with five or six other counties, and the district does go all the way to El Paso, maybe we can share the cost with some subsidies from the state of Texas that have useful working products like this to help us make better decisions. They are very interested in assisting us in this ongoing work. And fortunately, the cartographer for the regional council sits here in Alpine, in the former Centennial School. That just happens to be the person that has been hired at this time. So it's a real convenient working relationship for us here in Alpine to update and continue to work with this map and be able to use it in our meetings as we make the best recommendations to use so that we make good decisions for the city with regard to zoning. So we're working the issue of what that might cost. My best-case scenario is that the state of Texas will probably put that into the slot factor for the regional council and allow us to pay for it. I think the highest cost to the city is probably $3,000 to $5,000 per year. So we would like to see a line item in the 2020 budget for something in that range. I think for a working document that will be as useful as I expect this to be, as we expect this to be, something that we will use at pretty much every one of our meetings, and that often you will see as a visual aid for your decisions in your meetings, because we only recommend to you. We don't make a decision, you make the decisions. I think this will help us all make better decisions, and we would sure appreciate your awareness and your small funding, if that becomes necessary, to help us work with the folks in El Paso and here in Alpine to get this updated and a little more useful than it is in a forgiveness presence form. Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Just an observation. I think sometime in the past, somebody brought up the concept that they were wanting to do a zoning map of one layer that would just focus, digitizing it and focus on just the residential parts, then one focusing on business, and then another one focusing on, I guess, roads and trails and prospective future endeavors. Is that still being considered?
That is very possible. This resides in a CAD system called ArcGIS, which is the most common governmental mapping software that was created by our federal government decades ago, and is used in many ways all over the world at this point. It's taught at Sol Ross, so there is local expertise coming out of our young students in our city. And yes, the way it works is you have different layers that you can turn on and off. So if we wanted to create one that was just business zoning, that we could make the map of just that.
Flood planes.
See?
Flood planes.
Flood planes, I think he probably already has those layers, so, because those come out of the United States Geological Survey. And so information like that can be presented with the layer on where is the zoning. And maybe for planning purposes, gosh, we really should change the zoning over here because that's the worst flood plane in town. Maybe we don't want to change that zone. Specific to the question that was raised tonight by some of our citizens. So yeah, it's a really powerful tool, and I am delighted that a small governmental entity without a very big budget like Alpine has the capability to cooperate with this regional group that fortunately is based right here in Alpine in their cartographic capability. It's just a nice piece of luck that I think we can make work. And if someone from the city needs to go over and talk with the cartographer at Centennial School and get a specific product that y'all need to make a decision, you can do it, you know, just drive across town as opposed to having to make calls and go to El Paso. We're very. We're, we're very fortunate that that person resides here in Alpine.
Any more questions?
What can I do? So, so they're looking for $5,000 to erradite this?
That would be great.
So do you need approval from council at a future meeting to grant that? It's going to have to come out of reserve because I know it's important to budget. Will we do that at a future meeting?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. So I'll start off with the little history first. There is actually currently a historical district in Alpine that was put on the ordinance in 2011. A number of people actually looked at that ordinance and have noticed a number of issues. Carl Fleming, the previous Planning and Zoning Board Chairman, was asked, was asked by city council to actually revisit the historic district. And Rick came and talked to us several months ago at our meeting, and we discussed this. So I've taken up the task to investigate this historical district. First of all, the current ordinance defines a very large district in a very large area, and a lot of the houses in that area are not historic. They're, you know, 30, 40 years old, and it's not really well thought out. It also defines an advisory board to review the plans. There's a lot of vague criteria. There's a part that talks about signs, but no criteria at all that defines what is acceptable sign in a historic district. And the best we can tell is not being enforced. So that's the state of the current ordinance. So the next question is, what do we do about it? So I've been investigating criteria for new ordinance, and since an ordinance is complex and you need appropriate background for evaluating historic structures, et cetera, we decided to start with just a reference ordinance. So what I've done is I've talked to the Texas Historical Commission, and it turns out that they have a program that addresses this issue for cities in Texas. It's called the Certified Local Development. And what, what that does, it helps you identify your local historic resources, they help you integrate the preservation process into your local planning, they provide training, they provide technical assistance, they do, have some grants. They also have a network of professionals and volunteers that work together to help you address your historical district needs. So what are the basic requirements for CLG? Essentially, the towns will have to be accepted into this program and are some requirements. The first thing is you do have to have an ordinance in place to do this. Of course, to have a historical district, you have to have an ordinance anyway. So what that, what they require is that you have to establish a preservation condition. You have to have a historic preservation officer that belongs to the commission and is an expert in your town about historical issues. You have to define what are the criteria, historic criteria in your town, and you have to have set up a process related to how you, how the city operates with historical properties. So I asked them, do they have any examples of ordinances for this? And they sent me a copy of the Belton ordinance, and it addressed most of the questions that we had at our planning and zoning meeting, and contains all the requirements of Certified Local Development, or today have been working with the state. So that, using Belton as a model would get you there pretty quickly. And it looks like a pretty straightforward to merge into the Alpine City Code. So just to give you an idea of what we would be doing with this ordinance, what they had in there specifically, and of course, this could be updated for Alpine, but the first thing it does is it fills the old ordinance. So all the wording is there, we just change the text of that, creates the new historic district, has the wording for creating a commission, all the wording that defines the duties of the commission, the wording that creates the historic preservation officer, defines all the duties for the historic preservation officer, provides all the design criteria for what you can do and cannot do with historical structures, and it defines the actual process that you have to go through if you want to change your historical structure, et cetera. It defines maintenance standards, what you have to do to make sure that your historical district, your historic structure is, meets the standards, and it defines the guidelines for obtaining a certificate of appropriateness. That's what they use to designate historical structure, and it does specify penalties as well. So, Rick, the status is, redefine Belton, seems like it's a good fit for this, and working with the Texas, the Texas Historical Commission seems like a good way to go since we really lack a lot of the expertise for related historical structures, and it sounds like they would have to give us a lot of help. And if you want to get this done in expedient fashion, it seems like using the Belton ordinance might be a good way, good place to start. So the next step would be is we would need an ordinance that defines the criteria, the processes, et cetera, but that's the status of where we're at.
Phil, Tom, thanks for all the work you've been doing on this. Have you all thought about maybe creating a workshop to pull in a number of the building owners in the historical district to really have a discussion about what this would look like to interview them?
We have, actually. We're all having this about, it takes the right people to get together, but I'm not going to do anything until we are from the council, but that would be the next step, to present this to them and get some feedback.
Very good, sir.
Yeah, from my, from my perspective, I would think we want everybody to actively take the action together.
Right.
Does that make sense, all of us?
Yeah.
One of the, I think, when we talk about the historic district, how large it was, one of the problems that the city had was enforcing any of the ordinance tips because they just didn't have the staff or the money to pay a staff member to do that. And so probably one of your thoughts at that time, when yours were so low, was can we reduce it to make it easier? But we're, of course, we've gotten into, you know, getting a really, really weak historic district going. So if we can keep the going rate and build something natural color, tourism and a variety of other things.
Thank you, Mr. Tim.
In that respect, there might be a, an option of exploring how the Texas Historical Commission might be able to also participate, but I know they, they offer grants and who knows, grants for salary that could be used to research or, or, you know, some significant signing of some of the historical structures or providing information to a municipal government as to what action to take when you have a, a building that might be questionable whether it's historic or not. So that, that might be another source.
What's your sense, think about the timing to come back to council then? Because it sounds like we're going to have an ongoing discussion for a while.
Right. I have a sense of coming back on that particular issue will maybe take a couple of months.
That's right. Okay, and just try to get some sense of, you know. Sometime, in the next one month, we'll be on the next one that you can do. Thanks.
Anyone? Okay. Move on to court report. Alpine Downtown Association, Mr. Tootsie.
Send me, I'll get one more.
One more. Hey, but you're the judge, so.
I can't tell, you'll see in the numbers.
She's cheaper looking than I am. Okay, we have two events coming up this year, and we're going to concentrate on that. We've got one coming up very close. We have the Harvest Moon event coming up in September, September 13th, Friday the 13th, and then Christmas in Alpine will be in December, over three weekends in December. You might remember the Harvest Moon event last year, the most successful event, held in the, in the alley between Sixth, Sixth Street and the Tree Hollow and E, and a parking lot next to the Trans Bank of the Bank. We have a new mural going in there on the, Carol Fairley at Sol Ross, trying to be some of her students to paint a, a painting there that reminisce of when Alpine had an art colony around the old Sol Ross Teachers College back in the late 20s through the 40s. And several, several good mural artists came out of that. So this will be a, like, like last year, it will be a mural dedication in the alley. Around the corner, we'll have the two, the two galleries on Holland Street that will be open, and then we'll have Money at Japan, John Wurz, the City Hall, to be playing there. Then we'll move down to the hollow, where we've got an event called a Wall at Jazz, where we have some local and out-of-town artists that will be performing. That was very successful last year at Phil, Phil and Holland Patio Area, so, and we've heard a lot of talk about the need for music along with it. I know Bruce Lee is very interested in that issue. So this will be just Friday and only, we've talked about Friday and Saturday. The Hotel Richie has an event on Saturday, and some same musicians will be involved. We suggested doing it together, and they defined that, but we certainly can promote each other. Then the Christmas in Alpine will be, it will start out with the three weekends, the parade and the tree lighting and the smoke bill on Saturday, will be December 30th, and then the next week, I don't know, I don't know what it is. There was some question about the date. Chris said the city really wanted the parade and other activities to be on Saturday to attract people from out of town, but the 30th is just after Thanksgiving. I was concerned some people will be out of town visiting grandma that weekend, and we might not use the crowd as much otherwise. So we hope to resolve that. We've got a meeting next week, 28th, in which we, we hope to hammer that out and come up with some specific dates. The next weekend, 6th and 7th, will be not yet to Christmas, and then that Saturday, that evening, Pollard will have their party, then the library and the city will have their Christmas in Alpine events on the 14th. We're also working on a business lighting contest, want big businesses to decorate their store for Christmas, keep the lighting on late into the evening and during the days of the Christmas event. We'll also have Hayrise taking people around to different places like the last year. The fire department would like to use a fire truck, and they suggested their brand-new, very old truck, that anti-rotting.
That's a really good part for that.
So to take people around, so those are the things, some things that we're working on. It's a joint venture of the city, the AP, Chamber of Commerce, downtown, the library, women's club, the hospital, railroads, the Corps of Patrol, National Guard, Osage Ranch, and of course, the water. We're also working on some of the other programs. Our branding program is kind of at a standstill right now. Our real smart plug, Liz Sibley, has had family issues and has not been able to get the time that she needs to give to that, so we're not moving too quickly on that one. We are developing a website, and that should be up and running very soon, shortly, and we will, of course, add link with the cities, there's an Alpine website and others, and of course, they will link to us. And the murals, we're getting real close to having a walking tour, a mural walking tour. Nancy Whitlock is mostly working on that. She counts right now 36 murals, but don't, probably rather be 37 or 38 by tomorrow morning, probably. But she, she's developing a walking tour, very much like the historic walking tour that visitors there has, and she's close to, to coming together on that. So these are some of the things that we're working on.
And you might mention also about the skating rink.
Yeah, that is, yeah, for the Christmas, yeah, thank you for reminding me. Yeah, the hospital has, has contributed, donated funds, so we can have a skating rink one night during Christmas in Alpine. So it's going to be right here next to the Center. And the hospital is, don't they want it to make that happen?
And I'm just wondering, is that important on skating rink, when you also beautifully ask the hospital to not do this?
Maybe he's thinking that.
I don't, I don't think about that.
With your dancing shoes on.
No one, Josh, no one.
Questions? No, great. I mean, that's a great agenda. I really appreciate what you guys have done and talked about. And do you have any flyers made up? This October will be in San Antonio for the TRO convention.
Yeah, taking, taking a copy and photo of the TRO, and I asked him today, he's not quite ready, but he said he will have it.
Okay, great. And you could.
Not, not the complete product.
Right.
He'll have a dummy and some process.
Right, so we could hand them out there at the, at the TNA conference. Oh, absolutely. Okay, thanks, sir. Any questions? Okay. Now, Judge Judy.
Thank you.
Sandy, I'm sorry.
It's not fair that I have to report a boring numbers report after this society report by Mr. Street, so remember that, so. Either way, way behind or.
Way in.
Yeah. Okay, I came before you last time and was not really happy with what we reported, and I'm not this time, but I think we're closer to getting what we want. Ms. Crespo, our wonderful clerk, has worked out on me and Mr. Potten. Mr. Potten, his, his role is going to be go through the boxes of files we have in our office that can either be dismissed because we have no law enforcement officer or not the witness that we need, or they can, we can go with prosecution of us. So that, he is going to be great, and it's wonderful that we have somebody in town. I, you know, I love Ms. Court, she knows her stuff, but having Mr. Potten here, he can go at his leisure and just go to the office and go through those stacks of, of records that, that we don't have enough paperwork, we don't have the witness, whatever. So that's going to be wonderful. And, and the reason I'm saying that is because Ms. Crespo got you some generated reports from Hill Country and from Purdue. They don't mean anything to me because what's happened is Hill Country is still saying we have around 527 active cases. I don't think that's true. And until we get through those boxes and see exactly what we have, what we can proceed on and what we can dismiss, only then will we know actually what active cases we have. Some of them, in fact, I had a call last week or week before from a young man who wanted to go into the Navy, and his case was from 2012, and so that's what we're looking at. He had to get this resolved because, you know, the Navy wouldn't let you in unless we got that cleared away. So what, what Ms. Crespo has done for you is that, and this is just a, maybe not exact, but since I've started as judge, we've gotten about 100 and 150 new cases, and we really, I know that Ms. Solis can attest to, because she has been in it when we've had court. Each time we have court, we have more and more people appear, and so I think we're gaining some more respect as far as you better come here and pay your fine, or we're going to keep putting on the docket, we may erase you, you know, that kind of thing. So we're having more participation, which is good. We've gotten more money in, I don't, I won't speak to that because I don't know what those numbers are. Another thing that I, I mentioned to you last week, when we take a case and say, okay, they're not showing up to court, maybe they're from out of town or probably never going to show up to court, we just go ahead and send them to Purdue to collections, and in that respect, at that point in time, as far as we're concerned, that's an inactive case for us that has been closed down, hasn't been dismissed, but has been closed down to go to collections so that they can, see what they can do, if they can collect some money for us and resolve it, that's fine, but as far as we go, we are concerned, that's, we're done. And so that's the number that I want to get to you as to what actual active cases do we have, what is going to collections? You know, that, that's what I think. I'm not a numbers person, but to me, that makes sense. That's the number you want. What have I done since I've been here? And I don't know that one, ask Hill Country to generate a report, it doesn't tell me anything, neither does it with Purdue and Brandon. Now, Ms. Crespo was, like I said, she's our charger. She was on the phone today, probably an hour with Purdue and an hour with Hill Country, trying to figure out, trying to tell them, these are the reports we need, these are the numbers that we want to give to our. the numbers that we want to give to our council members so that you'll know what's going on with the court. So anyway, that's, we're getting close and Mr. Potten's going to help out. So I'm encouraged by, and he's here and in town and we can all get together and see if we can start clearing this stuff out. Because since I've been here, I have not really been able to clear out anything. I can take care of the cases that are upcoming and are current as far as clear out that backlog that drowns our numbers and skews the numbers. I would like to get that resolved and I think we can do that.
That'll be resolved promptly. We'll cut that backlog.
So anyway, again, I'm sorry that I don't have the numbers that I want to give to you, but I will, I will send. Just like I said, it's very encouraging that Mr. Potten's here and he can go into the office anytime, he doesn't have to have me do that. He can just go through the boxes and boxes and boxes that we have down there. So anyway, any questions?
I'm just curious, on the reports and monthly reports, the very last items on it says fines, court costs, and other amounts collected. And we keep so much, but some is remitted to the state. What's remitted to the state?
You know what, I do not know that. Do you know, Ms. Crespo?
By law, we, there's some fees and, well, court costs, they will go to the state by law, by state law. So now every two years, the legislation is updated and starting in January, most of those court costs and special expenses will go, it will increase or decrease and the special expenses will be gone. They're not going to do that. So the city can keep more money instead of sending it to the state.
And I was wondering, if you'd like, maybe a percentage of what we collect that goes to the city, is that, is that something that would interest you, is that how you would like that reported? Or, and Mr. Potten may have, he's been doing this a lot.
The state legislature always wants to get a little bite off, so they get some of the court costs, using all the classic estimators going back to the state. So we'll try to ditch all that percentage.
But is it for a service they render to us?
No, it's for the privilege of us, it's for the privilege of the legislature, man. It's actually been one of our.
Mr. Potten, let me ask you this because I don't know. What, do the court costs go to us or is that what we split and the special assessments? No, like, we can find out. I'm not sure exactly which part of that goes to the city.
So the court costs go to the state, most of them are kept by us.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, please, I can't say it.
Okay, all right. We'll get all that together.
She talked about a special assessment. That may be a new tax the state legislature stuck in on us, I'm not sure.
It will take that away. The special expenses.
They're going to take that away?
Yes.
So anyway, the state does get some money from us. Not a lot, but it adds up.
Okay, I'll try to get you a more narrowed down idea of what we get to keep, what the state has to do with this. Okay, any questions?
Just an observation, if I look at the numbers and I hear about it, under daughter with the arrangement, I kind of do the division and the math. This is a gross overstatement because you've got traffic fines, you've got ordinance issues, but the average fine's about $265. So my message for most people is, hey, watch what you're doing, don't break the law or you're going to end up in court costing you about $250.
Yes.
And which is what, you know, the fines are all about. We're trying to help people to run, take the right actions. Zipping through town and.
Exactly. And on that note, we have not, since I've been here since last October, we have not had, and I'm not sure what's going on, I have not had any ordinance violations that have come to the court regularly. So I'm just, I'm just putting that out there, that we're getting the traffic, mostly, but we're getting as many as large. That is bringing us all the millions we're bringing in.
We're in those.
So. Okay, all right, I'll try to get some more narrowed down numbers so for you to make time. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. She does a good job for the city.
Okay. Second, discuss the grant policy procedures necessary for federal to run funding. What do we have to then?
Yeah, so why don't I cover that one? I've got a fair amount of experience when it comes to single audits. You recall, we got a grant from the Civil Defense and State for $3 million. Any grant that's awarded at the federal level that's more than three quarters of a million dollars, we have to have a policy in place about how we deal with grants and we as a city do not have one. So the problem we're running into is we are in violation when it comes to our single audit that we will initiate after the fiscal year closes if we don't get a policy in place. What you see in your material is a 70-page document, issues an example of the real grant council of governments. That's the grant policies and procedures I could have pulled from a number of them. I thought that was a reasonable formula to do. There's no action for us as council, but I do, did want to bring it up that on the city's standpoint, we have an action order prior to the end of this fiscal year, which is the 30th of September. And want to make sure when council is aware of that, and I know Cynthia's going to go off and get one put together and bring it back for us to pass as a resolution, because that will be sufficient for. And other than probably a name change and a few other items that are very specific to Alpine, probably not expect too much difference, but that will fulfill our legal obligations and actually pass our budget. So anyway, I want to bring that up. I've done too many of these and found where they've not been done properly. And what we do not want to get ourselves in this situation is not satisfactorily pass in this single audit and as a result, not be held forth for future developments.
Good, sir.
Any questions or comments?
No.
I have another one.
Presentation of a recommended annual improvement plan for the first five years of the streets of the personal KSA, Senior Project Manager, Abel Foul. You know, he's standing there.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me. As you know, and as a fellow of mine, we've been working on a street condition assessment study for you. And tonight, the intent is to give you the highlights of that project. Right now, we're at a point where we have a draft in place and we had some input from staff yesterday. And then with the presentation tonight, and if you feedback, we'll be able to go back and wrap it up and turn it over to you. I do have a presentation, so if you bear with me. And it matches the one that you have printed. Joyce? Yeah. And I appreciate Abel's help in helping me figure out your text system on the monitor.
No. No, did you have the box? Did you already say ours? Lucky you.
And this laptop doesn't have PowerPoint, so I turned it into an PDF, so that's the reason for this growth. But like I mentioned, my name is Avio Correa with KSA Engineers. And as I also mentioned, this is just a brief presentation. Please feel free to ask me to speed it up or to stop and clarify if needed. I divided up the presentation into two major parts. One, to break down the methodology that we use. That usually answers some of the questions that I expect there might be. And then our draft findings and recommendations. Like I mentioned, the meat of the study is the resulting 10-year recommended capital improvement plan. And in your council packets, we had the first five years. We had already developed a 10-year proposal and I wanted to have a chance to go over that with your staff. And then that was the additional supplemental that's included, the color-coded 11 by 17 sheets. Just to explain why that is. The method used for assessing the condition of the streets is the pavement condition index method. It's a score that represents the health of the roadway section. The method works by literally inspecting every street. You might remember or may have identified one of our staff that was here during the last few weeks in May and in early June, looking and measuring out distresses on the street. A distress is a surface imperfection on the roadway. Typical ones are cracking, heaving, potholeing. The picture there is of some weathering and unraveling. I believe that's on lockhart. The pavement condition index is, has been used for decades. It was first developed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. It's standardized by ASTM, formerly the American Society for Testing Materials. It's accepted by FHWA, FAA, DOD, by the state of Texas, by other states and DOTs. So it's a very widely used system. The method works for asphalt and concrete pavements, including roads and parking lots and airport facilities. Of course, the focus of your study is your roadway network, which is primarily made out of asphalt. And so the focus is on asphalt for this presentation. The PCI has a scale that is based on a 0 to 100 scale. And then it has standard categories. So a 100, a roadway that scores a 100 is basically a brand new road. You can see the seven categories ranging from good to failed. One of the customizations that was asked of us for this project, which is commonly done, is to have a simple scale where we have either an acceptable road, a fair road, or a poor road. The typical condition for each is, like I mentioned, if you're in the upper range in the green zone, it's a new construction, or the roadway is showing non-loading relating to stresses. So just the surface showing some imperfections, but they're not indications of a structural issue. When a road enters into a fair condition, you start seeing some of those load-related issues, but they can still be remedied and some more severe surface layer failures. When you're in the poor condition, you see highly severe surface distresses. The most common one that you notice is what's called alligator cracking, where the surface of the street literally looks like the back of an alligator. That's a typical indication of a structural failure. I apologize for the upward scrolling. But just quickly, and I think this is where I'll put a few people in the crowd to sleep, but bear with me, this is only three slides. This is how the method works. So like I mentioned, we have a field representative that literally measures or assesses the density of 20 types of distresses on the street. They're listed there. If you have any question on any specific one, I can sure answer them. They're input into a, into a field survey and categorized by severity level and then the quantity of the distress is noted. The severity density, the distress density is then correlated to historical data about what that indicates the remaining life of the pavement is based on that particular distress. When you have several distress types, the software that we use combines all those curves and comes up with a deduction value. And so that deduction value is subtracted from the condition of a perfect road, which is 100, and then you arrive at the score. And so in my little simple example there, if you arrive at PCI of 61, then you can assign it to the category, which is a fair condition. What you, what you end up with is an unbiased identification of your best and worst roads. This is actually an image from the huge spreadsheet that is in our draft report and will be in your final report. It organizes your streets by block, as was requested. We noted the quadrant. We also added the text dot ID, thinking of in the future, if you're pursuing specific grants that require that information, it's all there for you. So we have the block, the from, to the beginning and endpoints of the blocks, the S PCI, which is a simplified PCI, the category, and then some other information that relates to, relates back to our field notes. All of our field notes will be a part of your final package because our intent is for our results to be, to be able to reproduce by anybody. This is the resulting distribution that we found for the city. There are 381 blocks that are in poor condition. There are 144 blocks that are in fair condition, 344 that are in acceptable condition, and there were 17 segments that are, that are roads but that are unpaid. Part of the final report, and there's a small version of this in the draft, is a color-coded map. I'm excited that you guys use ArcGIS. We created an ArcGIS file that will be included in the digital delivery and that of course lets you manipulate the data, share it between staff, and export it to the public and things like that.
Avio?
Yes?
I tried to correlate this map against the numbers you had on the previous slide and was not able to. So I was looking for the 381 that were poor or worse, and I couldn't find 381 blocks of red on there. Is there, is it just there's not enough detail on the slide or what?
It could be, Counselor, because the, on the ArcGIS program, it's working off of the seven categories. And so some are shaded kind of between yellow and red. And so you know where, in the simplified version of our spreadsheet, we have the bright red, bright yellow, and green.
Right.
But I'll take a look at that to make it a little more usable for you.
Thank you.
And in the ArcGIS system, you'll be able to zoom in and we also, one of our deliverables is a full-size map.
Yeah, I took and blew it up to a 12, I think, because I got put in that series.
And I realize that the, that the image that's in the draft is, once you blow it up, it gets a little pixelated.
Yeah, I don't.
But no, thank you, I'll make it out of that.
Thank you.
So how the PCI is useful, it helps identify the best maintenance and rehabilitation premiums, M and R. The curve that is shown on there is the typical life cycle of a designed asphalt road section. When a road is brand new, it has a little bit of a dip in quality. It hangs out in the green zone and then it dips down into the yellow zone and then it kind of plummets to the, to the red zone. The PCI score is a, is an indication or a tool that can help define what types of improvements are best suited for that road. When a road is in the green zone, you, you want to do protective type of items, seal coats, crack repair, minor pothole repairs, things like that. When you're in the yellow zone, you're looking to add strength to the roadway, your milled in overlays, your overlays, things like that. When you're in the red zone, it's, the failures are becoming too deep to do any surface improvements and so you're looking at full reconstructions. The, how the PCI is useful is that you can come up with a strategy that delays the inevitable, but it keeps your roads longer in the green and or yellow zones before you have to go all the way out to a reconstruction. The idea is that how many communities have to deal with this issue and have been doing so for a long time is that they build a new road, so that road is taken care of, and then they work on another failed road, and then they move on to another failed road and another failed road. So you're always on this cycle of pulling the worst roads from the bottom of the barrel and moving them up. The PCI helps you come up with a strategy where you're trying to, where you're maintaining the health of the roadway in a structured way. There is no perfect way of, or ideal way of doing this, you know, in the simple example I have, for example, in, after a few years of. You know, in the simple example I have, for example, after a few years of building a road, to do a protective seal coat that seals the surface from letting water get in there and freeze-staining and causing problems with the concrete, maybe a few years later, a milling overlay. But you know, some, various agencies do different things. They might have various seal coat instances, or they just let them go into a milling overlay situation, et cetera. So keep in mind that we're going to have specific recommendations for this explanation part, they're just kind of to illustrate the point that I'm trying to make. One of the requests from the scope that you gave us is to come up with a seal coat plan. And I understand that seal coating, and when I say seal coating, it includes chip seal or thin surface layers. Chip seals serve a very good purpose, and from what I understand, they have served this community for a long time. It allows you to do a lot of roads at once. It allows you to mobilize quickly, your staff can do it, and it has its benefits. Seal coating is meant to be a protective action, and so when it's done on a road that's failed, you place the road on this rollercoaster cycle, where it continuously dips into a failed condition, the crack sealing, or I'm sorry, the chip sealing brings it up to the fair condition, maybe touching into the green zone, and then it starts falling again. And then you do it again, and then it starts falling again. So although you can get to the road more often, as you can tell from my illustration there, it spends most of the years in a fair or failed condition. So one of the intents of our proposal for your capital improvement plan is to start to break out of that cycle a little bit. And so that correlates with an explanation of the plan that I'll dive into in a second. But I wanted to make sure that our strategy was understood, because that speaks to how the projects were put together. So what we found is that your street inventory is made up of about 875 blocks. The typical sections that we found in a conversation with your staff is chip seal over a prepared road base, like a compacted culchi type of base, chip seal over an existing road, chip seals over previously-chip sealed roads, and there are a handful of roads that appear to be built with an asphalt section. Some of the common distresses that we found is the, and I don't have to state the obvious, but there are a lot of roads that are alligator cracked, there are a lot of utility patching that's in bad condition, some edge-cracking, pot-hauling. The ones underlined are illustrated in the photo, that's seventh street. Here's another photo. This is West Valde, you can see some edge-cracking, and some chip seal, weathering and ravelling. One of the characteristic things about chip seal is that you see the chips, it's called chip seal because it's a combination of an asphalt emulsion, basically just really liquid asphalt, and then chips or rock pieces are pressed into that asphalt, and so that forms a driving surface. The chips are meant to be covered to about 50%, but over time, they start getting loose, and so you see a lot of that little gravel that's very uniform in size on the sides of the road. So that's a common distress that we found. This is a small version of the large ledger-sized sheets that were added to the information that you have, and that color-coded map will be included in the report. The strategy that we put together, like I mentioned, first tackles the roads that you have slated for improvement in the first three years of the plan. So these are roads that you had, that your staff and you had mentioned, that were intended to be, you worked on. And then we start going into a combination of roadways that are in the poor condition, rigging them up to a green condition, and then, over time, having a schedule of protective actions. Specifically, starting in year five, for example. In year five, we propose a budget for seal coating, crack sealing, making small repairs to the roads that were reconstructed completely in year one. And then in year six, do the same for the roads that were in that situation for year two, et cetera, all the way until year 10. We worked off of the anticipated annual budget, that is, that we understood was your target of $400,000. But you will also notice that the roads in each year don't add exactly to $400,000, and that's because we recognize that the chip seal procedure has been of value to you. And so now that we, that the proposal is to do more reconstruction, which means that you can get to less roads each year, to have a remaining budget, to be able to respond to the, you know, those immediate needs on an annual basis. The intent, of course, is that, or not, of course, but the intent is to, as you have more roads coming online that have a longer design line, that your chip sealing activities as a way to address failed roads starts diminishing. And so with that said, 10 years is a long time for a forecasting plan of this type. Councilor Stevens, you mentioned going after, you know, new grants that the city may have not gone after before, and I realize that, you know, there may be in year two, an opportunity to repair a road that was slated for year five, but is perfect for this one CDB grant or whatever. And so there are opportunities and flexibility in the plan to do that, but that's the approach behind how we put together the plan. Will you get to every road in the 10 years? No. But you might be able to delay some improvements by the fact that you left some budget for the chip sealing activities. One thing that I mentioned to staff that's important, I think, to keep in mind, is that even if, for example, there is a road in year 10 that in year three, you just absolutely need to do something about because it's a safety hazard, then our suggestion would be to go ahead and chip seal or do a seal coat or something, a Band-Aid, but not remove it from the list in year 10 for the prescribed activity that was slated. So that's our strategy for that annual plan. Now, I know this is a draft, and in talking to your staff, there are some roads that have had some work done that are on our year one section, I believe, including Hancock and some others. So I'll make those corrections, and recently, of course, the newer version. But that's the idea behind our strategy. So to dive in a little more, I guess I should have had this title. Like I mentioned, in years one through three, the strategy is to tackle your recommended improvements for planned roads that you had told us were priorities. In year four, you start beginning to proactively focus on failed roads. In year five, you improve some failed roads, and then you seal coat year one roads, and then you have a budget for a chip sealing. The asterisks that I had in the slide is as a reminder to talk about the fact that we would start diminishing that budget of all each two. And then, like I mentioned, in year six, we continue that strategy, and then years seven through 10, continue that strategy. We do recommend just kind of taking a step back in either after year three or year five, and just assessing how it went. I realize that there are some assumptions in the pricing, that, you know, you might have roads that you build with your own resources, which is cheaper. You might have some roads where you just decide to contract out, which is more expensive. It's hard to account for every one of those fluctuations in the pricing, and so we came up with a little bit of a conservative number, but that would be the reason to assess after a few years, how many of those roads were you were able to do to maybe relook at redistributing within the years, how that works. Like I mentioned, this is, I'm sure, what everybody was interested in. The study includes some other items that you had asked about, including an assessment of the functional classifications of your roadways. We have some notes and recommendations on that. I'm glad to hear that the COG was mentioned several times. It is a great resource, as you probably know, stating the obvious, but it is a great resource for a lot of things, including an avenue for continued funding for certain types of projects and assistance. And I mention that because the roadway functional classification is something that is quite different than that. With that, I'll stand for questions or any feedback.
Yeah, I have a number of questions. First, Abiel, thanks very much. That was the, we were kind of walking through. Let me kind of start at the top. There are, as you pointed out on one of the slides, 381 blocks that are in poor condition, which represents 38% of our city road structure, now roughly 875. Of those 381, how many are taken care of in the first five years? And the reason I asked, as I was going through the spreadsheet, it was difficult to tell, based upon the square yardage, which were single blocks, which were multiple blocks. And again, I'm just trying to look at, you got 381 that are below or the likability, a lot of work to be done.
Sure.
And so I'll take your pick of the first five years. How many of those 381 get taken care of?
Sure. And that's something I can include in the spreadsheet as a column, or I'll think of the way that's user-friendly to show that. That's a good point.
Okay. So my next question is, you talked about and includes a note here, the annual budget of $4,000. I presume the city staff gave you that number as the basis for the budget for capital improvements?
That's correct.
Okay. You've got a budget of about $1.1 million for the Streets Department, which included the capital improvements. I'm just trying to think through and understand the basis for your dollars per square yard or the total maintenance and repair. So for example, there's one here, Eagle Pass, this is the first one, between the Texas 118 and North Fourth. It's a reclaimed stabilized and overlay at 1,200 square yards. Is that a dig-up, put down new base, and hot mix? Because what I heard, your view was chip seal is a temporary strategy, and I'm just assuming hot mix is the longer-term plan. Did I understand that correctly, or did I miss something?
That's correct, and to give you a full answer, I can define these a little better. To start with what you mentioned, reclaimed stabilized and overlay, that's correct. That's where we found that there might be a possibility of chewing up the existing roadway?
Yep.
Processing it, putting it back in the ground, compacting it, adding some kind of stabilization, your chemical, cement?
Yep, yep.
And all that, and then putting a layer of overlay of hot mix, several inches of hot mix. The full reconstruction means getting rid of the existing road, scarifying the base, which means to scrape off the bad material?
Yep.
Come in with engineered fill, not meaning that an engineer needs to design the road per se, but that it's some kind of fill that's designed for a roadway, and then build up your road from the bottom, preferably a stable base, some kind of flex base like TechTop uses, which is just a combination of sand, the material, and gravel, and then a layer of asphalt, typically two or three inches. And then there are some places where we recommend a chip seal or a seal coat, and then some other combinations, like, I think I have a few where we talk about Murphy, for example, where there's a concrete swale, so that's, we try to factor that in. There are others where there might be opportunities to claim, stabilize, and then do a chip seal, because chip seal is a viable option when you have a low-volume road?
Yep.
Which is why I imagine that a long time ago, that program was instituted in the first place. And so, you know, we want to make sure to take advantage of the things that you were already doing. Our intent with the plan was to be able to act on it on day one and not, you know, have to go out and study more and do more things. So that's the idea behind that. So prices, this will be included in the appendix of the report. We basically come up with theoretical, you know, we come up with an imaginary road section, and we come up with the prices, what we would expect and possibly for that typical road, and then we expand that out to all roads. There are some things, like I mentioned, that we take into account, if there are swales, if there are, you know, if there are potentially sidewalk segments that you intend to fix and things like that. So I imagine that we won't hit these numbers exactly for any of them, to be honest, but it gives you a range of where more or less your planning budgets should be.
Yeah, and part, the reason I ask is, you heard, so we're talking about, you know, in terms of budget action, that and our discussion that we have. Our experience has been about $40,000 is a hot mix cost for a block. And chip seals, we're running just about $18,000. And so when I look at some of the numbers here, for example, you've got a chip seal at, you know, $3,300, seems rather low. Our challenge is, we've got huge mobilization costs because we're out in the middle of nowhere. My wife said, "Shooting for saying that," but, you know, mobilization costs are big for us. I presume that's not taken into account here?
No, and our assumption for the chip seal is that you continue doing it in the house, because, yeah, the cost of mobilizing a contractor out of Alpasso or Midland or that sort of extension. So I can factor that in a little bit, and just to be a little more conservative. You might also notice that we have an inflationary factor of 3%.
Yeah, we've got 3%.
So we try to be a little conservative, but that's a good point, and I'll incorporate that a little better.
One quick question.
Sure.
On the per-year basis, you have a list of roads, the best...